Good evening, everybody. My name is Adam. I'm the chair of Shastberry Select Board. We're in office meeting. This is Shastberry Select Board. Order at 6:30 on September 20th. First order of business, 6:30. Anybody that has a conflict of interest with the agenda show?
No. No.
Joe?
No.
No.
Do we have minutes from last?
Yes, September 2nd. You were at the meeting, Ken. And Joe and Mike, you were all there.
The tenor motion to accept meeting. It's a minutes acknowledged.
So move. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So Karen, if you could sign on as as co-chair, total would be great.
Yeah. I believe so.
You know, there's only one minute.
Warrant?
Yes, we have a warrant.
We have a warrant. Number eight. For seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, over a thousand, there is Sullivan. P L L C for...
That's our, I found this for the annual.
Okay. That's for thirteen hundred and twenty. And then we have Tam, another seven thousand, two hundred, eleven. That's the services. We have Weaver, excavation. Fourteen seventy-two. That's the balance, right? And we have Daly at twenty-seven thirty-one.
Twenty-seven hundred or two hundred and twelve?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Okay.
Affleck, that's one thousand, forty-four. And... B C B S Vermont. For eighty, eighty-four hundred and seventeen.
That's the annual payment.
Oh, okay, sorry. Caterpillar Finance, eleven thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two dollars.
The first annual payment.
Yeah.
What do you say?
That's the first annual payment, payment.
Dave, I thought that was paid to be one just big one. I didn't know that was for that.
Yeah, this one was finance, but half the other one was the grant for state. The whole was the grant for state.
I didn't understand. Well, I'd like to see you later, Dave, I can't understand it.
Okay, both fuels at eleven forty, eleven fifty-four. And Martin Buildings, thirty-nine hundred and ninety-eight.
That's the down payment for the parents who are...
Okay. Okay. We have forty-five fifty for consulting. R C B.
R C S now is for, uh, the other, the other, the other.
Okay. And I believe that's it. On the cat?
Eleven something. Yeah. The cat.
Eleven. Eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. Eighty-seven.
Joe, did anyone understand? I thought we understood that was just pay it off, no, no longer than that.
I was under that impression myself. But I was confused because we're getting a grant from the state for the mortgage.
Right, that, I understand, that's a payment. But this, I thought was supposed to be just trade, trade the Volvo in and pay that off.
No, no, it's never that. That the best offer we got was the cap, which was paying the Volvo, giving the hundred fifty thousand dollars. Just a question for about fifty thousand dollars, five years long.
I'd like to see you later, Dave, I can't understand what you're saying.
Okay, all those in favor of the warrant for number eight for seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Five zero zero. This is the payroll warrant for, for twenty-five thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Have a motion?
So move. Second.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Joe. All those in favor of the warrant, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero zero. And... Another payroll warrant for, for twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Do you have a motion?
So move. Second.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero zero and abstained. Okay. Announcements? Any announcements?
Yes, I have one, of course.
Yeah.
Friday morning, I, COVID coming out, so my Friday afternoon, I was tested positive for COVID. Friday morning, I was in the office with Dave. He went down his test, so I called the offices, wanted to hear about the, did you have communication?
Uh, we're all fine today. I was in the office today, working separately, but the state rules, I can, be fully vaccinated, I can continue. Without even really getting tested, I tested today, so technically, I'm fine. So please, please, we're going.
I just wanted to make sure everybody, the offices go open. I've contacted everybody I had been in contact with. One of them is already negative. The other person doesn't sound, uh, well, not good, so. I'm trying to work with the waitfalls, uh, to draw them, so I, I just feel like my medical is a little bit bad. The other announcement.
Any announcements?
No.
Okay. Public comments. Lynn, you want to come up and talk about this?
Where should I, which way should I?
Right there in that chair.
No, I realize that, facing which direction?
Uh, you wanted to face that way?
Facing the board is fine.
Alright.
Because I'll pick her up on the mic, thank you.
Okay, and I wanted to, if you could take... The, a shot of, this is very important, what's on the card, because these are being passed to all the people to sign on to. So just to show that.
Lynn, do you want to?
Oh, I...
Yep, come talk.
I was more comfortable over there, actually.
Oh, yeah, I know you were. We're going to make you a star.
We're going to make you famous.
Yeah. So tell us what this is about.
Okay. And so, to start off, I'll look here, and this is the Vermont People's Climate Action Plan. And where did it come from? Alright, we have, we looked to the organization Three Fifty Vermont, was an active participant, and plus legislators, and also different committees up in Montpelier, that were working on energy issues. And so, the Vermont Legislature will reconvene in early January, as we all know, in 2022. And the major agenda has to be, it's imperative, the Climate Action Plan 2022. Vermonters are able to plan for a just transition from fossil fuels to renewable, a renewable energy economy. The state of Vermont now has a climate council, which has been formed, and once, not too long ago. And they've developed this just transition climate action plan, and we're working very diligently. Alright, and some of its major actions will be counting greenhouse gases accurately, establishing a ten-year weatherization program, especially for low-income families, developing and improving public transportation system, which is crucial for different areas that are more metropolitan areas throughout the state. Develop renewable energy solutions and metering, net metering, community solar, heat pumps, geothermal initiatives. Pass, and pass, what do we need to have passed? And this is the Environmental Justice Bill. And it's S Senate 148. The weatherization bill, Senate 109. The green justice zones, the House 273. These are something that, the information is online, we could go and read it and feel that we are informed. And hopefully, that Vermont, along with Massachusetts and New York. Massachusetts has been the first, and really, the first innovator with renewables. New York came in, and now, at least, we're going to be in the top three. We hope.
We hope.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Where did they get the information?
That's through Three Fifty Vermont, that compiled these. And where did they get the information? Is checking with the various committees that I just indicated, that are written on the...
So if they log into three fifty vermont.org, will they get the information?
I, I think that is certainly the stepping stone into getting all that information, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. And then where are these going to be?
Alright, and then, what we've been doing, we, people who have participated in this endeavor, we've been in areas in town where frequent, many, many people frequent. But we certainly feel that it is imperative that people like yourself on the select board really take this very seriously and read beyond. Seems that, for some people, they feel that they look at it and that's that. But it, it's a wealth of information, but we would like you to sign it and lead it maybe with a town clerk.
Okay.
And this is all to save the climate?
Well, I, I will say that this is a step, and that many steps have to be taken. And this is by all means, an important, crucial one.
I'm not, I mean, I think this is a good thing, but there's one thing that really kind of concerns me, is it's counterproductive to what you're selling. Develops public transportation system in urban center along major transportation corridors that meets the needs of rural and low-income populations.
Alright, so I think in this, in this case, this transportation...
How does that save the climate?
Because we're not using fossil fuels gasoline, we're using electric. So you have your electric cars, your hybrids, and these come more into play. And the fossil fuels gasoline-driven get phased out. Clean energy.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Any other public comments? Yes?
Let me sit there?
Sure. Introduce yourself.
Yep. I'm Kathy Carter. I'm the chair of the Shastberry Cemetery Committee. And I just wanted to let you know, it's on the website, but on Saturday, October 2nd, we're going to be doing some work in the Center Cemetery, Shastberry Center Cemetery. Some volunteers from Vermont Old Cemetery Association are going to come down, and we're going to be, they're going to lead us in straightening and repairing some of the stones in there. And cleaning some of the stones. So we're gathering supplies to have up there that day and have put out some information to, in the Vermont News Guide and stuff like that, to get volunteers, because the more volunteers that we have, the more work we can get done. So, and since we really don't have any mechanism to repair stones in the cemeteries, this is a good opportunity to do that. So I wanted to make sure that you're well aware of it. And I'm going to work with Mike to get some of the, some of the supplies that we need up there. And Dave's ordering, he's ordered like the cleaning stuff and the epoxy to... So hopefully, this will be an annual thing, we can move around. There's some, there's some old, small cemeteries that are in really rough shape. They're all on private land, most of them, but I'm not saying we can't, we can't do that.
And what is the land on, is where they're at, right?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to preserve that, because it is history.
Yeah, there's a great one over on Myers Road. It's completely enclosed with a stone wall and a fence, gate in the front, gate. It's completely grown over. And along the way, you know, these stones fall over, and then they go into ground, you know, they get covered over, and then it's not so easy to find them.
We have seventeen.
Is this the one on East Road you're talking about? No.
Myers Road.
Oh, Myers. And the one on East Road, because I see the sign that says Shastberry, but it's, it's not the one that you're referring to. No, there are one on East Road is Maple Hill Cemetery, that is one that the town takes care of. And then there's Wade Cemetery, which is lower on East Road, that is also a town-maintained cemetery, as is Shastberry Center, Shastberry Village, and Grandview Cemetery, just outside of North Edmonton.
There are what, seventeen, Dave, right?
Uh, Kathy, I think you know that better, something like that.
I think we're like, I think it's like fourteen, you know, we've been looking at, you know, there's a couple that are just private, and they're one family, that they were buried on their own land, and so we don't tend to count that. One out in Shast, there's one of the ones out in Shastberry Hollow. We did this with Voca a couple of years ago, and that is on private land, but it, it's, the town has to mow it twice a year because they were petitioned to take it over because it was abandoned. So even though it's on private land, we still maintain that twice a year.
Good, it'll be on the website?
It is.
Good.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, I got a call from Citizens today, that the Center Shastberry Cemetery, the road that comes in off of Route 7, it's not a lot, I want to tell myself, it's not a lot, but there's a couple spots done by the road, up on top of the hill, that are done around the corner by the maple trees like that, it's a little touch it up with gravel.
Correct.
I mean, nothing bad, but a couple guys up there, couple, three hours.
We'll take care of it.
Two yards gravel.
Any other public comments? Nope. Okay, Treasury Report?
Yes, mine you know on the website.
I have a report from the Department of Commerce, and I'm not the overtime decision.
Alright.
We just want to point out that on the cash flow, there's issues out for running toll or taxes, we see. It's currently above six hundred thousand, or eight point nine seven toll. She wants me to remember tax, uh, November 10th this year, that is a Wednesday, not a Friday. Uh, it's waiting until Friday, the building delivering. She's aware of the problem with mail delivery, and that is why she accepts post-orders, waiting till the last day to pay. She advised, she's going to have to post up his hand, cancel your envelope, it's on her. Also, lots of people are using the online option this year, and she highly recommends it for people who might be sending a payment. She suggests using the G check option, since it's also likely a problem. It is also receiving in bad, monthly mobile bills, and hearing from people who never received theirs. Please remember that you are responsible for your taxes, you are preventing them from not receiving the bill. It's incredibly important this year with mail delivery, is if you haven't received the bill, call the tax. Just look at your address and see whether something needs to be corrected. Uh, it can be mailed a copy if you don't want to just fill it in. Moving to the reserve funds. We just want to point out, um, I'm not sure if this... The main thing you want to point out, when you go into the market funding category, we currently have a first half award funding, which is five hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. If we match that by the, and on next year, so we'll have the one million, twenty-five thousand for hard ground projects. We do have, we have the cash flow. The others, the, uh, function, there isn't a lot on here except for showing the taxes, since they post six hundred and ten thousand. Any questions?
Questions? You didn't hear it, did you?
No.
Yeah. Okay.
I think the big thing to remember is the taxes, uh, after the Wednesday, it's been on the Friday.
Yeah. Please be aware that the date has changed, but the taxes are due. If you haven't gotten the bill, it's your responsibility to make sure you contact Town Hall. Okay. D P W. D P W.
Close enough.
Yeah. Bye, Carl.
How are you?
Alright, what's going on?
So, on there, on the agenda, it has a grant and aid equipment purchase, right?
Yes, one.
Yep, that's it right there.
Yep.
From B C R C. And it's a municipal road grant and aid program equipment purchase. And it's something that we can apply for, and it's due in October. And on the back of that, it shows a list of the equipment that is eligible to apply for, and... I don't know, did, did you look at it, Kyle?
No, I didn't even look, anybody, Mike.
Well, just, I'll go over it quick with you. The first one's a roller, we already got a roller for the grader. Second one is a leaf blower, we already have a leaf blower, we purchased that a couple of years ago. Hydro seeder is on there. Jumping jack, we are all set with, we have a working one right now.
What is the jumping jack?
Uh, it's a compact here for...
For, for tight ditches.
Yeah, for compacting gravel around the roads.
Never knew it was called that, yeah.
Well, no, that's, they've got one, the jumping jack, it's for real small ditches. A plate compact won't go into that.
The plate is for surface, and the jumping jack does the, like, the plank trenches and stuff.
Right, right.
A lot of them are mounted on equipment now. The other one is a trench.
Mike, you're getting a little touchy, you hit two, two damn...
I don't...
Finish it, you're putting a lot of machine.
I say a lot of them are now.
I, I know, but that's...
Fun to hold.
They didn't, they didn't watch that with all the new guys.
Yeah. So we're, there's, the next one on there is a tractor-mounted disc for moving, that's nothing I'm interested in. The hay, the hay baler shredder, we already have, that was purchased right before I started, so I think it was through this grant, I'm not sure, but it was a grant that paid for that one.
Do we have a hydro seeder?
We don't have a hydro seeder.
It'll save, it'll save a lot of labor if you get one.
So, but on the last, the last, which I, I really like the hydro seeder, but talking with the guys and stuff, the last thing on this list is a stone screen, and I went to the town of Dover, and I printed these off so that you guys could look at it. Talking with the guys and everything, and that's what, that's what they would want to see right now, to apply for, is something like this. What that is, is, so you know how we stone line the ditches now and everything, so if we have to go back and excavate that stone, we're just throwing it all away, we don't have nothing to recycle it. So if you have some, like, the town of Dover, they made this, they, the guy actually sent me all the, the list of everything. Yeah, the prices are probably a little shy, because this was back in 2018, but it's, it's all the materials to build that. And they, they also use it for their winter sand in the wintertime, and they don't put any salt in it, so they use that grizzly to, you know, scoop the chunks out and stuff. So there's a lot of uses for something like that. And, and I'm here, that it has that, and the estimated cost is around six grand, fifty-nine hundred. I think, I think that's what I would like to apply for, so that's what I was proposing. And it says right here that if something was fabricated by the municipality, you can use the in-kind labor as a calculation of the required twenty percent match, too. Did I read that right?
So what are you saying, do you want all this equipment, or you want just some of?
No, we only can apply for one.
Right.
Yeah. I want to, this year, I'd like to apply to get the materials for the stone screen. It's a material screen, you can use it for, it's easier to...
I think it'll save more time and, and costs if you get the hydro seeder, Dave, uh, and Mike.
I mean, we have, we have the hay baler, we have the hay baler now.
Right.
If we get the hydro seeder, I mean, you have to purchase, you know, all that tack and seed and everything.
Right, but you, what you're using now, if you take the hydro seeder, you don't need the, that, I don't know, that, that cloth you put down.
Yeah, the matting.
The matting.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you.
That's, that's beastly expensive, unless you got the time to put it down.
Save the time and labor.
The time and labor.
I just feel like to...
Now, hydro seeder, you take all that out, you can stabilize your slopes, do your seeding.
Yeah.
All one mo, all one motion. So you're saving labor, you're saving material. So you're saving labor, you're saving material.
I mean, you're still, you're not, you're still buying material, though, you still gotta buy the seed, you gotta buy the...
When you, when you, when you're doing it this way, you're doing, putting down seed, fertilizer, then mulch. That's three operations. For the hydro seeder, you're doing it all once. And you don't need to buy the, the matting.
Yeah.
That's not...
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, I just see the stone screen being a little more usable at the...
Well, how often you do so, dig up stone, ditch your stone?
Well, it's...
I mean, you could do that next to them.
Yeah, and then what are we gonna do with everything, just waste all that stone?
Well, how, how many you dug up this year?
I mean, you go clean an end of a culvert that was stoned or something, you get a load of stone right there, you could run through that.
I don't know, you're, you're, that's your department, but I, I think you'd be further ahead with the hydro seeder. For self, and you're gonna spend less money. Is that what I looked up, was, what, seven thousand dollars?
They said that...
Or seven hundred gallon?
Seventy five hundred estimated.
Yeah. How much is this grant?
About six grand in materials and labor.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I will find that if you get the stone screener, you can use it for a lot of other things. I think a lot of that is ditch, ditching material would take out, you took some places, screened them, you're only gonna throw away. Roots and rocks, you know, big rocks and everything else you're getting, wax and can use. The dirt, the dirt off of other things, you're actually going out of places, dump, chill, and dump. Like, this is full. And screener, we're right there, we can clean out the big areas, so we can dump there again. But there's a lot of places, I think I've heard you say you're running out of places to dump all that stuff. If you was to, the rock screener, you're only putting a small, smaller portion of that, you can dump it, uh, in areas that turn and so on.
Yeah, and that, that's a good point, and thanks for bringing that up. But, yeah, that would help out a lot, too. That's why we were thinking the stone screening, too, because it's, it's just, it is coming hard to find spots to dump. And a lot of that material that we dump, some of it, you could screen through and actually probably reuse some of it somewhere, so...
Oh, like I say, it's just, you're, you're, you're the one that's gotta do the job, and I'm not gonna say, argue with you.
Maybe next time we apply for the hydro seeder.
I think it'll save money, but you know what, that's your, that's your call, I'm not gonna sit here and be a stick in the mud.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead. I've always wondered what you do with all the material that comes out of the ditches and how you reuse that, so...
Yeah, a lot, a lot of people take it for Phil, and it's becoming harder and harder to find spots to dump. And then this year's been tremendously difficult because it's so wet, so you can't, like, some people will want a couple loads, but you can't get that behind their house because it's so wet. So, yeah. It can be challenging.
The stone lining you're doing now is using larger gravel.
Yeah, larger stone, for erosion.
Does anyone want to take a motion? We're gonna discuss, we're only on a motion.
Sorry. Do we have a motion?
Uh...
We can have a discussion.
We got until October eighth to submit this. Please fill out, sign a return letter. On page October eighth.
So I'm making a motion that we have a discussion about this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I think Joe, you should, really should make a motion one way or the other to, you know, put a motion for the screener or a motion for the...
Sorry. Oh, I thought we were making a motion to discuss it. No, just make a motion to accept. Well, it's there about there. And then we'll have a discussion. Okay, so I'm making a motion to discuss the, the screener.
Second.
It's a discuss, no, you make a discussion to accept or, or reject the intent. And then we have a discussion about whether either or, and then we have a vote. So you're gonna, you're gonna make it either accept or reject this, and then we'll have a discussion. So we're gonna make a motion to accept the stone? Okay, I would take the letter of intent. The letter of intent. Okay, you're gonna accept that? Alright, that's alright. So now the discussion is about this, and whether we will accept, with whether we are going to apply. There's no guarantee that we get it, right?
It says, there was another thing here. What was it, I gave it a minute ago. Do not make any purchases before you, oh, you will receive a notice to proceed letter if your request has been approved. Do not make any purchases before you receive that letter. So no, you can't do anything until you hear back from them anyways, whether we approve it or not for that.
Now, one thing that I get, that screener thing, is it's already made, or you've gotta build it?
No, we are gonna build it. I have all the dimensions and everything and material list right here, build that. From another town. That's in Dover, at the town branch.
Okay. Somebody tried to reach me on.
Would you have different screens?
I don't know what it is, it's just, it's like rails you put down here.
We were talking about something different on that.
And then when you, when you, you dump it up here with the loader, it dumps that, and then the dirt falls through it, and the stone was off the path.
Would you have different screens for different filtration types?
I think they probably make that, looks like it's all, it's just...
That one is just one.
You can't change it. But what they're doing is, they, they'll make that, because the stone you're putting in ditches, what, like four inch?
Four plus.
Four to six.
Six, yeah.
Then what they'll do is they'll set this, so like maybe five inches or something.
Yeah.
So the, you know, the big, the stone goes off here, the drop stone.
Right. It seems like what they've been doing, though, it's bigger stone than it was in the past, right? I mean, it just, it's more, so it'd be a shame to get rid of that, that material now.
Yeah, we would reuse that for...
Yeah, because it's gotta be more expensive than just the run of the mill gravel.
It is, it's, it's actually too expensive.
So this is just a letter of intent that goes to...
Yeah.
The state.
Looks like...
For us to apply.
Yes, yeah.
Right, Gabe?
Yeah, we should consider this the application.
Yeah, okay.
We'll be going by our own.
Right. So we haven't gotten the money yet, we're just applying.
Yeah, this is just an application.
That's all we're doing at this point.
Well, it's, you know, like I say, Mike, it'll be either, either that screen or the hydro seeder is what you need.
I think right now, we should go through the screen, and then if we didn't have the hay mulcher, I wouldn't even think about it. But we got the hay mulcher, the way we're doing it is working. I understand it's a little bit more work with the matting, but I think right now that screen, some, that dead screen would come in handy.
Oh, I'm not saying it wouldn't be handy, it's just a question of, to me, it's either or.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Joe? No, I, I think we need to go with something that we're gonna use, I mean, if the screener is something that we're gonna be using now versus... And by the way, what is the benefits of the screener as far as the toss savings?
So like, that's...
Versus the hydro seeder, that's where I really like.
Well, that's what you're doing, Joe, is, is when you, you get a ditch over the years, you got a stone ditch, and over the years, they're gonna fill up itself. So when you dig them up, you've got two choices, you either screen the stone, like he's saying.
Yeah.
In which case you can reuse it.
Right.
Or you throw it away. And then you gotta buy all new stone.
And we paid money for that stone. So all that, all that stone is just getting dug up and thrown away, because, you know, gravel ditches do fill up quick over time.
They were paying money to replace the stuff we just threw away.
So we're, we had, if we dug a ditch up and we had a stockpile, we would reuse that stone.
I mean, either way, that'll save a ton of money, and the hydro seeder will save a ton of money.
So it's a win-win, no matter which, where you flip the coin, but it's, I think it's really gonna be up to, to date, to really up to you at this point. You, you know best what you're gonna need and how you're gonna use it, so...
The screener itself, too, is pretty low maintenance, it just sits there, you know, you don't have to, it's not gonna break down?
No, yeah, once we build it, it's, we're gonna make a spot for it, and that's where it'll live. And that's what they did, and you can't tell in the picture, but they actually, it's sitting on top of a platform. And then under, where all this falls is probably, I don't know, actually, there it is, you can see.
Yeah, right there.
See the wall? So all their stone falls there.
Stone falls off of here.
And then they scoop it up.
Dump it out here, and the stone, the stone goes down here.
So now the whole idea that's...
They did a nice job of that.
So you can take that apart and move it.
No.
No.
Hey, let me move.
So it's on a base? Yep. And so they back up here and pick up the stone that comes off of here?
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they did, Dover did a really nice job.
Yeah.
Went over there.
For a moment, I thought it was something you brought from job site to job site.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you use the other half of them, you got the big stone on one side, can you use the silt and stuff on the road tops again, or is it two?
Depending on, like, sometimes you dig a ditch and there's a lot of gravel in there, so like, you could, you could use it.
You got you.
For something.
Yeah.
But yeah. I mean, every, every spot is different, so...
So again, we're just applying for the grant.
Just applying for it at the moment.
Yeah.
You ready to vote, right? Art?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of applying for the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Okay. Do you want us all to sign, Gabe, or just one?
Uh, indeed so, members present at the table to sign, please check the box, the stone screener.
It says authorized representatives.
Uh, we just like more, so all the members present at the table.
Okay.
The last checked box is the stone screener, clean out.
Okay.
So Mike, it's about four thousand to fix that garage.
Takes a little more.
Was it, was it seven, three million?
Down through that.
Oh, bloody yes, right.
Uh, cap finance resolution.
This is essentially what the board are already going to approve, this is the cap of tank work. And I would say from Pat, this is the sector design, uh, about your brand, you know, the project's a finance, I think it previously...
Okay. We don't need a, do we need a motion?
You should have a motion in the board, we said, uh, we government, like, the evaluation for these practices and for finance. Uh, I am there in the center, all those at tables to sign, and then they're pressing. Not F five, no F two.
I see it here where it says sign.
Yeah.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
Do we hear a motion?
Aye, motion to sign the cap financing agreement.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No, okay.
Tony, you do have to add one, we need to read that there.
Yeah.
It was F five, my paper stack, it's just the other, uh, uh, the license.
Yeah, I see that. What else you got, Mike?
That's all I have.
Here's the whole staff, thanks.
Okay.
Unless you guys have any questions about anything?
Any other questions for Mike?
Uh, you haven't started great roads yet, have you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice any. I thought I'd gone around enough so I'd seen them.
Where have you been?
East Road, Maple Hill.
Did roll?
Blueberry Hill, West Mountain Road.
Blueberry Hill and West Mountain got done last week.
Okay, I didn't even, I had been up there this week, but...
No, East Road's next, and Maple Hill's next.
Okay.
We're in Hidden Valley right now. Yeah, where was Ron, Ron, where was that? Been all over the place, all the hollow is done, I don't know if you've been out.
No, I haven't been up there.
All the roads in the hollow are done. Um, we gotta do Roland tomorrow, Madison, Horton Hill again. And then this, and then West Mountain where Weaver's working.
Yeah.
We'll do that next week.
That culvert that they put in out there by Cody's place? That new culvert, that Weaver put that?
Yeah.
What did they put in that, the three foot of material in the culvert?
They call it E stone, environmental stone. And all it is, is the same stuff that came out of the ground that was there. It has to match the river channel. So it's the same material as the riverbed on the inlet side and the downwind side. That's what it is. It's two foot, I think they were like two foot stones, and then like a gravelly material. It's, it's pretty much the same, like, the gravel you get from Barney's, with big stone in it.
And there's no concrete bedding, no, no footings, concrete footings in that culvert?
No.
So what adds to the culvert when, when the flood comes down and takes all the dirt out of the inside?
We'll find out, I guess.
Right.
I, I don't have to find out, I know where it's going. It's there.
It's got two tow walls that get, that are buried, three feet, one in the front, one in the back, and that's...
So there is a plate or something with that, okay, alright. Okay. I was just thinking, they injure themselves right out of it.
No, it's three foot tow walls on the front and the back.
Alright, because I mean, you cannot put something like that, I don't care what your paperwork says. You cannot put something like that in the ground without embedding it in the ground.
Yeah.
Because mother nature will beat you every time. Okay, that was all my question was.
Yeah, go ahead, Art.
Art?
Everything's all good now?
It is, for some reason it came back, it's in good shape.
Good to hear. Now we know where that line is.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
You guys have a good night.
Yeah, to the theater.
We have one more item, uh, which is approval of a liquor license for an event. Uh, it's Madison Brewery, uh, they're going to do a wedding, uh, on the twenty fifth of this month. Uh, do I have a motion?
Joe, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Where, where is it?
It's in Shastberry.
I understand that, but they...
We're not telling you.
Oh, alright, okay.
Were you invited?
No.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna go?
I thought, I thought we were supposed to know where it was, that was all.
Do we have to tell them where it is? Probably not a good idea, right?
It's a public venue.
It's not at the school, is it? No, 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 it's at the private residence in town, in town. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. That's signed by the town, town clerk, right?
Yeah, that's correct, you can just put that on the stack, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, any other business? Action items, we don't have any. I don't think. We're not gonna have executive session? Nope?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes?
I think we should.
Okay. Uh, and...
It's like I was going to my office, but that's not the big reason.
I know, how are we gonna do that?
Mike, it's unplugged, and I believe, uh, Roland's probably going downstairs. And they use it to continue to be oil trapped, and just lock out the meters.
Okay.
We will come back, we're voting.
Just carry it, okay, uh, alright.
That'd give me a chance to work with the audio, see if I can get it clear for at-home people.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you got rid of them. All right. I'm still with them, no, they're still with us here, so we're gonna go down, we're all gonna go downstairs.